She's just over here. The comment I'd like to make is, I've been lately working with the Kent County Sheriff and have become a little more familiar with what they do on a daily basis. And I know Natasha Smith, I've worked with her before that out here. And the value that I see of having those type of officers within the township is events. She's helped us out a lot with our neighborhood watch, I should say, making sure that we're on top, that she's on top of things and got all the right information and that type of thing. The other thing that I've found is having men down at the sheriff's department quite a bit, she is very highly recommended, I guess recommend, probably not the good word, but it's a great word, but had an opportunity to talk with the sheriff a couple times. I brought her name up, and I mean, she was one of the top people on the list down there as far as her abilities and how she's valued as far as a deputy sheriff at that level down there. So, I hope that that's something that the township doesn't get rid of, is that type of individual here that we can go speak with. The other thing I've found valuable from her is to be able to find out what's going on, going on in the township and the north area of Kent County as far as crime, that type of thing. Be able to call her up and sit down and talk with her on a Monday meeting and say, you know what's going on. She's been very open about that as well, as far as what's taking place and that type of thing in the area, so that as a citizen you can be aware of what's going on. So, just wanted to bring that up and throw that out so that you guys are aware to know that there's at least one person who thinks that 20 will stand. Any other comments?
Greetings. My name's Bob Newberger, 9424 Algoma. And I just wanted to make a comment with regards to our meeting tonight. I wouldn't be here if I wouldn't have been at the township board meeting last week and heard about this meeting. I don't know how we communicate these things. Seems fairly important to me. I would think a lot of people in township would be interested in this topic. I don't see anything on the corner sign. I went earlier today and looked online to try and find this meeting. I understand there's something there in, on the township website, but I wasn't able to find that. So, going forward, my recommendation is that when we have meetings that I would consider this fairly significant to the interests of township residents, that we look at some different ways of notifying that we need. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Geraldine Schwartz, I live in Castlewood Estates. And we, I am not sure how many of you are on the neighborhood website, but there is a continual problem for all of us in this whole area as far as internet. And I had talked to the supervisor about it at one point. Everyone is just blown away. We can't do anything because our only alternative is spectrum. They have the monopoly, we can't bring anybody else in. And you can have, I've got AT&amp;T, I have 25 megabytes, which I get eight, so I cannot even stream TV. And I've done quite a bit of research and I've set things, the Attorney General Nessel gave me information. And the only thing that I know is that Michigan Public Services told me that they monitor the utilities, the gas, the lights, and communication, not internet. So, if we complain every time Spectrum goes down, which is every time consumers goes down, then they could do something. But what, I mean, really going, and I will give this to Mr. Green, is an article that was in Sunday's paper, Ottawa County, through the American Recovery Act. There's tons of money, federal and state. And I know we were looking at a cottage up in Sheboyden, Sheboyden, which is like out of nowhere, was giving internet, high-speed fiber optic internet, a brick house in Sheboyden County. Now Ottawa County's doing it. So, I think it's time we update, it's not better to our children, it's not better to people trying to do work. It's just, we're so behind. And I've explored every optic. The only other thing that I don't know is Verizon 5G towers. I think we are real close, because they, on one point they said, yes, I could get it. But when they went to sell it, they said, no, we can't yet, because that's another way of doing it. But you can't do hotspots where there's too many trees, we're up and down hills. Rockford's got half of their town with fiber optics, it's going to see the sprays. And here we are, I mean Castlewood's not a cheap housing. And you try to sell four, five, six, $700,000 house, but you tell them, hey, it's internet. So, but I will give this to Mr. Green, in case you didn't see it, I thought it was very important. Then I printed out one page of the Recovery Act. Thank you.
Are there other comments?
I've been trying to make every meeting that I can. The last morning meeting you had, we had a doctor's appointment. Roberta Scherrato, 953 Rector, Sparta, Algoma Township resident for 28 years. I had, my husband had a doctor's appointment, if you know anything about that, you cannot change them or you will not get in for another month. So, I couldn't be here. The last night meeting you had, I had a migraine and you wouldn't have wanted me here because I would have said exactly what I thought, exactly the way I thought. And that wouldn't have been good for anybody. But I would like to thank board for extending the two minutes to three minutes. It's about time. And I would also like to encourage the board to add comments after the meeting. It's very hard for us to comment on something that we think might happen, and it might save you time if we don't make a comment in the beginning, but we react to what you've done or haven't done. So, that's my part of it. The second part of it is, I keep telling you, I'm not your enemy. I spent 30 years as market research analyst. I know what it takes to convince somebody to do something if they've never done it before, or if you're trying to change them to go to a brand-new product. To do that, you have to contact them at a minimum of seven times. And they have to not only hear it, they have to believe it and think it will be something that they want to do. For this board to want a new building now without having said anything to the public previously, nothing in the board's minutes reflect that, even though obviously you've had long discussions about it. Had you simply said, this is what we've been dealing with for 17 years, it's getting worse, we need a new building, we need more office space, we need more upgrades facility-wise, we need to serve the people better, and come out and said, that's what we need, and we need a millage, or we need the flow to bond for that, had you done that, I think a whole lot of people in the township would have agreed, including me.
We're trying to do a verb.
No, but by trying to get us out of ABL, not because we are getting bad service, not because for any reason except that you, this board, other than Mr. Ficker, thank you, Mr. Ficker, who didn't, who agreed that, oh, it's just too expensive, besides, if we get us out of this, then we can ask the public to vote for a millage that will support more administrative people and a new building. That's bait and switch. You're also trying to convince people, approximately 60-plus percent who live east of Algoma and south of 14 Mile Road, that the brand that they have dealt with all of their lives for 29 years, since 1994, is no good, or you don't care what they think and you don't care if they use it anymore. What you want them to use is something that you decide is smaller and that's going to cost us at a minimum of probably $2 million to build, if you want a standalone library, plus it's going to cost probably a half a million to get the books, the computers, the databases, all of those things that we're currently being served very well with. All you had to do was be honest. All you had to do is tell us what you really wanted, and what you really wanted was an administration building. And it's not fiscally responsible to take away something that we've used for years and plan on who knows what afterwards, other than the fact that some of you didn't do your homework and didn't find out that you really can't try and join with another library system unless you talk to the library board, and you can't talk to the library board unless you have your own library board. That's a law. In other words, all of the current outreach, we'll call it. Wrapping up. Please be honest.
Hi, Kay Ma, Boarding Ridge. I'm up here to second the last three people who've been up here and to also say, you are professionals who serve the public. To interrupt her was rude and unprofessional. And Ms. Johnson, we can see your face, okay? It's seriously unprofessional for you to be sitting up here rolling your eyes, you were just, your eyes were in the back of your head.
Miss Kay, but it's not an attack personally.
I'm not attacking her personally, I'm attacking her professionally, because professionally you are up here as a public service person.
Page to the, to the whole board.
Okay, well, I'm addressing the fact that Ms. Johnson was acting unprofessionally, as were you, by interrupting the person who's speaking.
We have.
And I'm seconding the last three people that spoke, so.
We're in order then.
Thank you, that's all I'm saying.
Kurt and I had talked a couple weeks ago about trying to answer a few of the questions, especially if it's bigger picture, but we try not to devolve, so we won't have, it won't be give and take, but I can answer a few of the questions. So, Bob, we're hoping to have a couple more meetings as part of meeting some of the discussion today by the board, so hopefully we'll get more input and we'll be able to have that sort of, so that too. So, it's good input. Mrs. Schwartz, yes, super frustrating meeting with the Supervisors Association. They're all the same, the Township Supervisors Association. The county has got, is the one with the funding, so we're trying to work with them and kind of the process. We had a, we had a guest speaker at our last one's meeting, so hopefully we'll get some answers and, you know, cross our fingers. It's, it's just as frustrating for us as well, so. And then Roberta, that is, that is a good comment about the comments after the meeting, so maybe some we can talk about. So, we're gonna go to the agenda today. The two items on the agenda are the strategic planning committee. We're not voting on anything, we're just getting presentations. So, just our protocol, we can vote on the strategic planning and then the needs analysis.
What did you just say?
Vote on the agenda?
No, this is not an agenda.
Present, there's no question.
There is no agenda.
Okay. You can vote, you can, yeah.
Correct. You can hold the full board.
So, the two items are just the strategic planning and the needs analysis, so. So, we had, we decided to do a strategic planning, townships, generalized townships our size typically that I have seen, don't do this, but we wanted to, we wanted to be a little more sophisticated. We had done goal setting the first, well, five years ago we did goal setting, but we hadn't, it was very successful, we actually ended up doing eight of the 10 goals, but we wanted to be taken to the next level. And the board was really patient with that, knowing that we're just gonna try to do this. We had had one of our planning committee members leave the charge, Charlie Hall, so we didn't pay anybody to do this. He just had experience in strategic planning, but I thought we did a good job getting a really good head start on strategic planning. I made a mistake, at the last meeting I said that we voted on the core values, the vision statement and the mission statement, but we had actually just voted as a board on the core values of the vision statement. And this was done, we had eight meetings with between 15 and 30 residents, very, very active residents, a lot of amazing input. The core values that we voted on, and so took it to the board, and then we actually voted on this, was that we want to stay a family-oriented community, that we prioritize safety, serene, quiet living, that we strive for integrity, and that we want to protect and conserve our natural resources, i.e. the river. The vision statement was, Algoma Township is a thriving community, preparing for future growth while enhancing its residents' quality of life and protecting its natural resources. So, I did put handouts in the front, so if anybody didn't get one, please grab one. This board, at one of the future meetings, needs to vote on a mission statement. We need to take it here with a variety of comments that we had, especially in the strategic planning committee. And then we have some goals here, the board decided to table this so we could have a couple more meetings and get more citizen input. So, that's, we just wanted to show that we're trying to do this properly, we're, you know, we've been working on these for a couple of years. The initial goals are in the packet, there's the increased community communication, which we're hearing a lot today, try to do that better. Review the master plan for parks and trails, look at, must be at the facility manager. We have, one of the things that came about from some of this exploration is we realized that the community our size had six parks, most communities that we visited had a corner too. So, we're doing it well, but it's also a lot of, a lot of hard work and we just want, we need to stay on top of it now. One of the things was, most people agree that we need a larger function of office, that we need to better our internal staff communication, create a community services directory, which might help with people knowing what's coming up. Increase community events so we can feel like we're part of each other's lives and also offer some more volunteer opportunities. So, what I heard at the last board meeting was, we definitely want to take our time, making sure these goals are the goals that we want to accomplish together, so that's what we're planning on doing. I'd love to hear the board's thoughts on how to best do that, I guess, and then, then we'll segue into the needs analysis, so I'll kind of explain them a little bit before we have the link.
I know we're not holding it down tonight, but I did like what one of us, well, it was collaboration and we did, we should prioritize, we should prioritize these. And from what I hear, we need to increase community, increase community communication. I think, you know, that would be number one. And I think that we should explore, looking at putting our township meetings on YouTube. I know that's something that a lot of, a lot of places do. You know, I think people, I don't know, I mean, they might want to review it, I don't know.
So, I'm looking, I mean, obviously, please, as board members, especially share goals and, of course, objectives that you're thinking, especially bigger picture ones, but also, I'd like to hear kind of where we go from here, how do we get the buy-in and make sure residents feel heard. I think we have a good start, so we have lots to chew on, but I'd like to hear what Judy and board and Christine are thinking.
Well, I shared a little bit the last time about, I, I personally feel like I don't want to discredit all of this hard work that we have had from our community members, so my biggest concern was not necessarily the community input so much on some of these goals, is the fact of the more on the staffs and the internal input, because ultimately a lot of these things are going to fall into the hands of the people that are in the office. And again, I don't feel like we have a good strategic plan unless we are addressing the needs internally of the office with some sort of, some sort of office manager, some sort of, I'm not sure exactly what, but I am trying to look into some, some options as to what is, like, what could possibly, like.
Judy here, board?
I agree with Liz on a couple of things, but I think it starts with internal staff communication is number one. We want to address these things and that ought to take place first, because through all of this, over the last few months, that is the thing that has hit me most, is that it does, we don't get the communication out of the, in the office. And if we talk about this thing here with nine, 10,000 square feet, and we can't communicate within 500 square feet, what's the point? Are we going to this if we can't communicate in our own office? And whether a, a office manager would do it, I thought that's what the supervisor was supposed to be doing, is communicating with his staff first of all, and then communicating with the people. And I agree with Ms. Schwartz that mentioned seven times before you touched people. I was in sales and I know how this works. I had customers that I would go to for three years, every quarter I would there, be there once a quarter talking to these, and it got three years before I sold my first product to them. It takes time and it takes dedication, it takes patience. It's not saying, and I agree, I think the needs analysis, if you recall, I always liked this strategic planning meeting, but where we take it from there is the most important thing. And I think to roll out this thing here at this point is a long time. We have other problems that need to be taken care of, and to throw this in to the mix is, I think somebody said it, is creating chaos anyways, in my estimation. And so, so, pardon, pardon. Well, but I think that we have to get back to this thing, and I think that we, I like this idea that we're, we're got a first print on this, but then I think that we address this at another time where we roll it out more and we make it more obvious to people so that it's on the sign. And I think I agree with Bob. This whole thing came up at the last meeting and we threw this in for this meeting tonight. I had some other things to do tonight, I said this, right? And, yeah, I know that I'm wrong with Liz, but I, I have to bear, I guess I believe with, Ms. Schwartz there.
Scherrato.
Pardon?
Scherrato.
Scherrato?
Scherrato.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Everybody else misses it.
I don't even want to ask on this, though. But, you know, I agree with a lot of things, and I agree this needs to be done, but I just think this, it's being thrown together too fast, and we need to roll this thing out slow and, and sell it to the people. Not just all our.
That's fine, that's, there's always a first time and.
Let him talk.
If I, and, well, I, you could say more, I just, I feel I need to say a few things. There's always a first time, we've been working on this for a long time. If, if we didn't show it, then we would get accused of not showing this before the election too. So, it's always that catch 22. There's never the perfect time. Nothing is being voted on, nothing's been decided, nothing's been voted on. We're showing what we have done up to date, that's all this is. And I want your input on where we go next. How should we, how should we do it? What should we do? So, nothing, all right, there's not, there's no perfect timing, but, but, Gordon, I promise you I'd let you speak again, so I feel like I cut you off a little bit, so go ahead.
I, I believe in all of this, and I, the needs analysis, I believe that stuff is all true. It's just the rollout of it is just, sure, sure, too convenient.
Okay.
And I think that we need to slow down, and it takes a long time to get people to understand the needs, okay? And you don't roll them out, you know, we, we sat on this stuff here since last year, and we should have been rolling this stuff out after we had the meetings last year, and so the people can get a feel for where we need to go in the future.
It wasn't a complete document.
One second, yes.
I'm done, yes, thank you.
Judy in that list.
So, this board has been working on this plan for a very long time.
Yes, it has.
And as a reminder, Kevin has already stated before, and if you didn't hear it the first time, the key member that was organizing and facilitating it left us. And yes, then a lot of other things were happening and it got dropped. You could say that was the fault of somebody, whoever you own, I don't care, I'm not playing the blame game. We're all aboard, we're a seven-member board, and we should share in that. It is being taken up again. It was presented at our last regular meeting so that you knew where we left off, where we were. You, as a board, decided to table it. That was, in my opinion, an appropriate thing to do. We still need a strategic plan. I think we're working through that. So, to continually share negative comments doesn't do any of us any good. We're working towards it, we plan on having more meetings, we're working on being more transparent and being more accessible. As for the goals that are on here, I think they're very good goals. I would like to see them prioritized. I'm not sure how to prioritize them without any more staff comment or more public comment, but I'm hoping that's what the future meetings will do for us. One thing that's on there that I feel as a township board member personally is a need for a new township office, whether it's this one or another one built somewhere else, that's what we need. I've been here 20-some years, we're outgrowing this building, we need help, and if we're gonna have a township manager or a facilities director or whatever that looks like in the future, we're gonna need space for that. Has nothing to do at this point with the library or the proposals really on the ballot at this point. This was a goal that we set prior to all of that. It did get dropped for no, no real fault of our own, things happened and it got dropped, and we're picking it back up again, and we're trying to work on it and get it finalized. I don't think we're rushing through it, I think we are taking our time, and that's the purpose of it being shared with everyone up here, including the public. And that's the purpose of it being shared with everyone up here, including the public. Gordon, you've been complaining about what we're doing right now. We're open, we're transparent, I've never seen so many public meetings over one thing. You know, you're complaining that, and also on top of it, I, I've been here three years and I've heard two things since the, I mean, even before I was sworn in, I heard strategic plan and a new building. I've heard these for three years. You make it sound like we're just grabbing this on you like right now. You've been here longer than me, I know you've heard about it.
I, I know, I know it's all, I'll, I know there's lots of emotions and we, we want to do this proper. And I will apologize if I, if I personally didn't do something better. I apologize to all of you, I apologize to board. It surely was not intentional, there's, we have 100 moving parts. We're, we're the second fastest growing community in the whole state. And it's a crazy job, okay? I know everybody appears with intentions. You never have to worry about us having group think because we're strongly independent. So you're going to get the best answers because we all care immensely.
So you're coming here for this presentation, is that true?
So we're still to just get every part of the speed on the strategic plan and then we have the architect. So we did pay for the architect to actually do this properly. Dwayne, thank you very much. So, but we had to get, get caught up on the strategic plan. So if you, if you, you gave me all input, I'm, I'm planning on having more meetings with staff and with the public to talk about the strategic plan and then bring it back to the board for final voting, okay? So then we can move on to the needs analysis, which had to do with like, try and figure out like what would it, what would it even entail? We had participation from, Dwayne, I'm not sure of the numbers, 25 people?
Yeah.
25 people. And then plus we did tours of buildings as well, just to get our bearings, what would this even look like? So that's the board today as well, so. Yeah, that would be great, Kelly. So Kelly helped a lot with strategic planning. Thank you, Kelly.
I'm Kelly Sheeran, 113 Holbein Boulevard, Northeast Grand Rapids. I'm the deputy supervisor. I'm here to just kind of, again, Gordon, another board member, Bob Wilson and Kevin. And I began the idea of the strategic planning back in 2020, 2021. I've been the administrator of this since the beginning. We put out flyers, we advertised in local businesses, we asked for every resident input that would want to come to these meetings. And we had monthly meetings with 30, somewhere between 20 and 30 residents and a few board members sometimes or staff members. Fire chief came to some of these. We, with Charlie's guidance, with Mr. Hall's guidance, we were able to do a SWOT analysis, which is, you know, in the, it's a way of looking at our strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats. We were able to do that in groups in the community. We had five community groups and we had one staff and elected official groups for those who work here in the office. We were our own group and we acted just as if we were one of the resident groups. So that was the input, that was what informed this. We worked from October until the very next June, so quite a few months. I think we have one month off for winter break. The last two meetings, we were finalizing the mission statement and the goals. The goals were started, you know, were created especially by staff and elected officials because we wanted them to be smart, we wanted them to be attainable. So that is where these started and then we brought that to the five resident groups and they worked on a little bit more to make it more, to give that input. And this is what we have. I agree that internet services really needs to be on there and we have been working on that for a long time. We're constantly with them. So I just kind of wanted to give a little bit more background so people understood how many residents participated in this process. This, this has been a two- or three-year process to get here. One of the goals we realized was a larger township office. And it felt like if you don't do the research, you can't know what to tell the people. And if you don't tell the people, you don't, you know, it's a little bit of a catch 22, but that, there we are, I know we already explained that. So appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, guys. So I'm going to, I'm going to transition to the needs analysis, which was talked about at a couple of work sessions and then we actually voted, obviously to authorize the architect to just do a discovery, that's all this is. But nothing's decided, it's still lost some of the input. And Dwayne, I'll just take it over.
My name is Dwayne Masling, I interact at Studio. I want to talk through a little bit of the process and just to echo that, we are an architecture firm, but we do this needs analysis with a lot of other people, nonprofits, 1,500 square feet to 1 million square feet, before any kind of, there are some visuals that were generated for this, but really just to help both things get better. It really is a very early conceptual feasibility study. And the intent is so that we can answer some questions, maybe on needs that are going on, so therefore it says the needs analysis. So there's a lot of, there was a lot of participation, council members, you know, some residents that we did in this initial workshop, which we're going to walk through. In fact, some of the handouts that you guys have in the back, they don't capture everything that was done, which I will show up on the screen. So I'm going to kind of walk through that, there's a lot of pages, so I'll kind of be as brief as I can at a time, hopefully complete, and then we can open up all the questions that come out of that. So we started with this in June. There's a number what this discovery report you see up here is kind of highlighting exercise one. There's a couple of these exercises, we met in June, it was 25 by, I think 21, maybe a little less than it actually showed up, we'll show you those team members. And these are exercises that we've done with a lot of other office environments, different work, customer service, those kinds of things that are similar, that help educate and help inform us so that we know what a plan, environments and space around that. That's, it's really meant to be exercise that's not intentionally threatening for us to start to draw plans, elevations, it's meant to us to kind of listen. And really what the goal is to kind of find critical success factors, that's kind of a term we use. That's important for you guys as an organization, as a staff, as a resident, how you guys interact, all the users and stakeholders that interact in this space, this office space, and even bigger, this, this site. So that's the goal of these exercises. So as we kind of go through that, the first one was really building off your strategic plan. We needed to hear a little bit about that, so some of these things you guys have been talking about for a year, but we needed to understand that, so we did, as the whole group, the 20-plus group kind of weighed in on kind of an exercise. Can anybody, am I hearing, somebody's seeing that? You guys seeing it, okay?
Come on up.
Your speaker's on.
Do you need to move up, sorry.
Your speaker's on?
I think so. I'll talk a little bit longer. So.
Or face this way.
Sure, sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So the first exercise that was done was speaking about what makes Algoa Township unique, special and appealing. Now, some of this you have addressed on your strategic planning, but as I said, there were some of our team members that needed to hear this. And so what came out of that is really the highlights there. That exercise you see on the right was a matter of people, groups kind of coming up and putting a sticky note with their comments. And then after that, we kind of voted on it. And then the what came out of that vote, basically those colored dots represent points, which helped us kind of highlight what was important to the participants. And these are the things that came out of that exercise. Excellent location, festival rural, proximity to Grand Rapids, the fact that you're a small community, but that you're connected to a larger resource city, the, the school districts are a key part of that strength, the natural connections, you know, the Rogue River, the White Pine Trail, the local parks, the fire line, the recreation support that you guys have here is a key part of who Algoa Township is. And then, of course, the community builds on that as well. So these are the things that kind of really pulled out and kind of set the, set the pace for the rest of the workshop sessions before we moved into the next exercise. Jump back here. So the next exercise too, so this gives you a little idea, before we get into, there was two things, the Algoa Township user experience of today, and we broke everybody into four groups. So here's one group, we call them the maize blue and the green and white. I guess, yeah, we'll have to speak to who decided to go on one side and which team, but the four groups themselves met when we were basically an exercise of images, words, phrases, that we wanted them to pull together in almost like a collage format that helps answer the question first, the Algoa Township user experience of today. And by that, we mean it could be a resident, it could be the staff experience. The challenges that they have in the day-to-day were just the interface between staff and residents or the community side. So there really was no rules to this, but that was kind of the basis. And then the second follow-up to that, and then we did have a shared session between the groups, the follow-up to that was the user experience of tomorrow. Where do you see, where, where does Algoa Township need to be? So we've got to kind of run through it, we put all of these on the screen, and I will run through that. This was this second, the third and fourth groups, team white, team green. You guys see some of the names in there? Zoom out here a second, sorry. There we go. Did you guys still read that okay? Sorry. So the first team, this happened to be the U, so technology, rural setting, we are cramped, expansion is needed, there's just no room. This has to do again with what there's, what everybody was experiencing now when they think of Algoa Township. Shiny, I thought it interested me, shiny bolt and a bunch of rust. So there's these little images you'll see down here that are kind of highlighting those conversations. And those are the basis of talking points for each of the group. Think tank, focusing on the problems of tomorrow, growth and expansion. This was, the goal of these is as we start to talk about this, we're hoping to see patterns and repeats that people are seeing, because those are the things we bring to the top and say, these are important. And getting back to that critical success factors, those are the things we want to bring forward as you walk through the next phase of development. Next group, solid as a rock, having what we have, but growth is happening, so it's that whole thing, how do you balance that? You know, you, you have a special place here in Algoa Township, but there's the reality that there's other things that are pushing on that in terms of growth. So how do you, how do you balance between that growth and then maintaining who you are as a community? Wonderful parks, that allows us to play and have fun, riding rural space for pockets of neighbors, again, who you are. Work and live in harmony. So again, this is a quote about user experience of today. Some additional comments, nuts and bolts, what is around the corner, growth and development. So again, more concern was coming up, how are we going to respond to some of the growth that's been kind of identified? Both at a resident, but obviously for the office, it's just how does our office and staff respond. We have a slow pace of life because we're outside Grand Rapids location. So again, you're kind of connected to that bigger connection, the urban, but at the same time being that rural identity that you kind of rely on. Office condition is cramped, displayed by the look of our faces. So struggle with teamwork, the next one just come up. Again, there's things, behaviors that have to contribute to the team, but there's also things space can do to contribute to that. You know, like look, there's disconnect right now here between the quicks offices and the rest of the offices. That may only seem like 20, 30 feet, but in our experience, that disconnect and feel like you're part of a totally different office has significant impact on how team collaboration works. So these are things, again, we're picking up on, we're hearing. Vision plan for the future, expansion will be an adventure. So that gets somebody's relaying into what does that mean looking ahead? And then user, I'm just going to move on to the next one. This is user experience of tomorrow, so these are looking ahead. Our vision needs to be focused on growth and expansion, somebody said. Balance is required for living and working technologies. I've heard some things about technology, the internet, that clearly was permeated through a lot of this conversation, not just in terms of the office support needs, but how the community responds to some of that. So that's clearly being relayed in part of these workshops. Investment matters, let's have a smart money management piggy bank and not have money wasting away. So there's an investment in the future again, it's a kind of a consistent comment. Concerns, I mean, I do all highly, some, we need to navigate the needs versus wants, of course, it's that whole balance. How do you kind of respond to the growth, but at the same time, make sure you're doing it, you're being stewards for the dollars? And so those are some things that came up in some of these conversations. We need to be working towards a bright future. Sunflowers, bright future, again, this is something that everybody was optimistic and looking forward to, cited in the conversations that we heard, as you look ahead to what Algoa Township is going to be. Not, not that it isn't there in terms of what they do now, but how do you, thinking ahead, it's only going to get brighter. Some additional comments, growth is happening, we need to invest in the expansion, including services, so again, a little bit of that response to growth. Mindful of community members' emotions. Obviously, that speaks a little bit to some of the comments that, and concerns tonight. Let's regain control of events and be more efficient. When people matter, we see happier staff and better teamwork. So again, part of this is speaking to how the space, not just for the staff, but how it can also respond to residents in terms of how they interact with the staff. And I'm just going to go a couple, that's a big win for Rivers, sports, teamwork, we should display wise use of power and remember that people matter. Let's manage our growth to maintain, manage our growth to maintain a slow pace. So there's that whole thing about not growing too quickly, how do you respond to the needs, but at the same time make sure that it's managed at a pace that's efficient and that doesn't jeopardize your current community and your identity. I'm going to stop there, so those were a couple of, that took care of some of that first exercise. The second exercise was about what works and what doesn't work. So basically, we're equipping teams and all the participants with phones and they're walking in the building, but they're also walking in the site and they're looking and they're taking pictures of examples of the things that they like and that they don't like. Now, there may be some things in an existing building, I know time can be rough in some of these buildings, but there may be some things that work well, we want to capture that as well. It's not just assuming that everything is a replacement. So that's what this was about. So these are actual pictures from the team members and the participants. So you can see excellent, excellent location, high visibility, open space for extra activities and room to grow, so speaking to the recreation field. Again, what does work, the community history, again, the hall, your identity, the legacy, those kinds of things are important, you don't want to lose that. There is some updated tech, technology, so I think that's what this was highlighting. Open collaborative environment. Now, you know, this speaks to this space, that's not necessarily in some of the other ones, but again, not wanting to lose that, it isn't necessarily about just putting up closed walls, it is, there's some privacy concerns that were identified, but it is making sure that that open team environment so that communication happens naturally, it doesn't have to be forced. Updated restroom facilities was additional, also some comments on this existing space. Security was a big one that was identified. The risk, you know, in terms of that interface between staff and residents. Limited meaning space and capacity, something that you guys are living through right now. And then some of this in here too, it's just wave binding, sorry, jumped long. So this one on the bottom here, no directional signage. So again, when people arrive, ability to know, have someone greet them, get rates for what needs or need to be addressed, know how to get those answers in staff, know how to interface immediately and be more efficient with time. Limited number of parking spaces, I think that goes without saying, you guys have been addressing that for a while, so. Limited exterior toilet fixtures, yes, so those are some things that were also talked about later on. No sound separation, acoustics is a big problem in the office environments, so there's confidentiality conversations, both with staff, but it could be with staff and residents, and that's an important thing to make sure that gets addressed. Limited space for staff, storage capacity was a big one, the space just does not hit the needs on a regular basis for those storage needs. So it's looking ahead, how do you address for that? And then we got into this, the next exercise four was basically getting. And then we got into this, the next exercise four was basically getting three different teams kind of met together and kind of did a little program exercise of space. So this was team campus. They actually looked at some of the, just the site itself, outside of the building, and some of those needs and identified some of the recreational needs, had conversations on that. Because again, it's kind of this whole campus, it's thinking about the big picture. How does that respond? What the building does will impact some of the recreational adjacencies nearby, the parking and things like that. So they identified some of those items. The T-ball field is a good part of that conversation. And when you think about all that, how do you grow, how do you expand without jeopardizing the site development? So those kinds of things were discussed with that team. This was looking specifically at the building. So again, thinking about how residents interact with the reception. So this is all about them kind of defining. Again, this exercise was the team themselves putting together these program spaces, writing them in, and then thinking about how they interact, how the flow happens and who's adjacent to who. And so some of this is the outside support spaces. And then so there's kind of this public versus private connection. Both the interface that happens here, so there's a direct connection, residents getting to the staff. But then there's this whole support space over here that can happen on the community center side. So that was a conversation, how does that operate? When that needs to operate by itself and you secure this at night? So that was some of the conversation this team looked at when we talked about team public. And then team service. So some of this again was relating to the interface. There was conversations about a basement directly. It's really the storage needs, the election support for equipment. How does that happen in terms of when you interact your day-to-day, but then you have these after-hours support elements that need to be there as well in addition to the community space that's part of that? So they looked at that exercise and again, they're putting spaces and names, just kind of having direct conversations with each team member about how that can work and flow. After that, that was the June meeting and workshop. And then we spent probably three different, from eight nineteen through eight thirty, we went with different elder township, Algoa Township. Staff, committee members, some residents basically to review some of these spaces, some of your neighboring partner spaces. Alpine Township, Gaines, Corlent, Algoa Township, Talmidge, Caladonian Plainfield. So what we're doing in here, you're basically looking for things that you like, that you work, that work well and maybe some things again that don't work well. So it was an opportunity to walk and talk and some of the photos that were captured as part of that exercise. So this first one was Alpine. Again, convenient drop box is a key part of it. Alpine had a little more separation between their staff in terms of back office areas, then open workstation areas, and then this service counter and all residents from this side. There was a little more layering. You have some of that now, but there's just not a lot of distance to do some of the back office and privacy. So that was one thing the team noticed and thought had some good value in bringing forth to the conversation. Some of these may be relevant, this is the planning zoning in terms of support space. Kitchen break area, some of these, again, are not necessarily all positive, some may be negatives. It was conversations and we talked about what we thought we liked and didn't like. Large community space was what Alpine had over there. And some that they used it quite a bit for rentals. So it was something that supported them pretty well. The Gaines building is big. That one is a whole different square footage. So right here, if those of you are familiar with, when you walk in, there's essentially a concierge greeter that kind of directs you down this hallway of different evolved departments. They essentially have their own little storefronts in each, in the areas. So there's a lot of square footage, it's a nice, it's very well organized. But at the same time, because they made it so big, they made it so independent with the departments, there were times when we felt like they were losing team connection and collaboration because they were so separated behind the scenes. Again, that was another thing that was talked about there. Gaines continued. This was something where staff arrives on the backside, public arrives on the front side. So it really was kind of this threshold conference space for people to meet. Community room, this really was only for meetings, for the chamber meetings. And then they had separate community rooms down in the basement. So they really managed different activities in each space. But again, a lot of square footage they had here. Larger kitchen, and then the rental community space was down below. Roll through these a little quicker. Corlent, there's kind of arrival at check-in point, again, with a receptionist. And there's a conference space directly off the entry. So again, seeing a lot of opportunity where there's meeting environments directly off that can be supported between staff and residents. They have a little bit of their own legacy, historical elements, and then their community space. Kitchen accessible, community room, some of their office space was pretty small. Some of this was really packed tight, so it wasn't something that we thought was a good model looking ahead. These two just all in Talmidge. I'll say Talmidge was, had a large rentable community space, which was neat. Their actual chamber, their community, their meeting room, commission room, they only was much smaller, much more limited. In fact, they had some great counter areas off to the side. So not a great model. It's probably actually smaller than what you guys have here right now in terms of square footage. And then Talmidge, that looks on the other end of it. Storage area, check-in was a single point of contact. So again, speaking to that directly about how they get in, who they greet, who was greeted, how do they get responded to and addressed with as soon as possible and efficiently without distractions to somebody that maybe is not supposed to be the first point of contact. Caladonian, similar thing, a large barrier separating, a little more security. There was open office and then all in the back area was closed offices. Roll through this a little more quicker, a lot of storage, they had a whole separate area for storage area. Community room, again, large space. Everyone has a larger space than you guys do. They just thought they're much bigger. Plainfield Township, they had a separate clerk area off the entry, but again, I, that's something to talk about. But again, speaking, you kind of have the same thing, but it's this whole, how do you manage flow during election times, but at the same time make sure that there's synergy and collaboration with the team members? So you're not also. And then they had a lot of technology in their community room space. So that was the biggest thing in the learning lessons from Plainfield's site visit is with the flexibility and the technology support that they had was something that the team liked. Storage, this is a lot of stuff, elections and just additional facilities type storage. I know right now you guys are storing stuff over at the firehouse, so there's some things on that. So it's just paying attention to those kinds of things when you think about the next phase of expansion. All of that generated into essentially a program. So this, I know it's tiny here, I'm going to zoom it up. But basically what this is doing, this is basically identifying a space after all these conversations, interviews that we had, the benchmark visits with different site locations. We basically pulled together square footage with additional comments and summarized it all into a program statement that gets us down essentially to what we're looking at for the square footage, projection of needs to fulfill that, which was around 11,000 square feet. So this is capturing everybody, it's capturing growth based on the feedback and the meetings that we have. These were additional program, I don't think it was part of that. So just quickly into the study. So we did look at, the color here looks a little different than what's on my screen. But we did look at this existing building, we analyzed a couple approaches to it. This with the community space on the end here, so this is your main entry you're putting in. This is your current community space. So again, organizing back house staff with storage support. Kind of, so you have kind of this threshold for between residents arrive and where staff is kind of beginning that, the private area. So all public is happening on this end of the building. We did a similar study on the other side, flipping that. And again, this would be essentially a new construction. Part of this also would be looking at the phasing of this. Because again, you're looking at this as if you had to explore it with people actively moving because you can't, are relocating them. So I'm thinking about how you do that in a phased approach. So this was flipping everything on the other side. The challenge of these layouts in this existing building is structure. It's infrastructure, mechanical systems, sprinkling, all the things that would need to come into play with that. So we wanted to do the exercise, but then we said, okay, what are some other opportunities? Knowing that as far as the building, because it really did limit the number of offices that we could get and some other things. So we said, okay, what happens if you do a whole new plan over top of this existing section? This is what that program that was published starts to get us into. In terms of the size of community space. This space right here represents about, is a little more than the size of this room. So you're basically having a large community area, but then it's divisible with partitions. So you could have it broken up into separate meetings. And again, all the meeting office rooms, the workstations, storage was being met on this. The challenge is, this is on the existing building's site. So that led into the follow-up conversation, what if we looked at a new location? What if we looked at on the other end over here in terms of approach? So basically, the existing building is over here to orientate to, and then we have the new location over here. It doesn't impact any of the fields, there's an opportunity to gain some additional parking. And there was at that time a conversation about whether we would have a lower level that Judy essentially bring the election equipment down in below and drive in and drive out in terms of the storage piece. So that was one appeal to the topography or the grading that was out here. So that's an exercise we looked there. This blows it up a little bit more in terms of some of the storage needs. And some of this is what you have in your handouts, so I'm going to flip through this pretty quickly. Then we, so looking at that with a full basement, this kind of identifies that space layout in a little more detail. This again should be in your handouts. And then a lower level with a full basement. Then the conversation says, you know, why do we need all that? Because part of this had to respond to it, more community space. You know, we have this space over here, this existing, could that potentially be an opportunity? Go more efficient here in terms of less build-out and rely on this space to still, you know, be a community space, which it can fully operate as. There's also some toilet facilities and things like that that could function in additional support for the rec activities. The fact that this, by not growing this building out, we're allowing this to potentially expand, whether it's for the little league, but also for additional, the other parking. The other previous ones, we're reworking the existing, we're really starting to push on the edges of that and limit it. This again gives us good visibility off of the intersection thirteen mile in Algoa. So it was kind of where we went in terms of direction as another opportunity. Again, these are all studies. So we're looking at this as just opportunities and conversations and discussion. So this was the study three that was looked at. This looks at essentially a one-story approach, which basically, more colored out, is giving you a large community space. This is that threshold, you arrive in the front space here. All of this is back support space for conference, offices, workstations, built in for growth. You have your whole community chamber area with supporting conference on the side, storage, bathrooms, and again, additional storage here. And I dare not, I hesitate showing this because this assumes, this was just to say, okay, what could it look like? It is a conceptual to feasibility, this is by no means trying to say that we're ready to start construction tomorrow. And so now what this intent was, it was just to say, paint a visual, there's different ways to look at that in terms of what that could be based on people's difference. Because there's a, there's a whole, that's a whole nother exercise. So, sorry for the long time, there was a lot of material. I just want to reiterate, there was a lot that went into this, a lot of participation.
So much wasted money.
Some of these comments kind of summarize why one versus the other in terms of positive and negative. Everybody here in the community may have additional comments that build on that or take away from that. But it was our, kind of what we highlighted as part of the conversations with the team.
Yeah. What else will we be making up?
There are very companies for you guys here.
Yeah. See if we have it ready. So where do we go from here, I guess, you know, a little quarter ideas? I know what I heard quite a bit from almost everybody is, let's see what happens. The election, just to see what happens with the library, whether we have a plan for that or not have a plan for that. But even with that said, like to get an idea of what everybody's thinking. Again, we're brainstorming and I can propose something, throw it on the board, things coming up. And then we could actually load on the timeline, but.
What are we looking at roughly budget-wise? Where's, I mean, I know we have a capital fund, I know we have some money stored aside. What are we looking at in terms of funding for this?
That's a good question. So as you recall, on our capital plan, we had planned for, we could do a hundred forty thousand dollar a year payment comfortably. We also have one point three million dollars for our book, we want to spend that. We also probably could do another couple hundred thousand from our reserves. So that gives up to one point five million.
And what is it going to cost roughly? I mean, I know it's.
So that's another reason why I had the discussions with Dwayne about, and we actually met, I think I had with me at the time. We had, the first one was with the basement, and that was about six million dollars. And we're like, can you make that less expensive? So with all the basement saves about a million dollars.
But I like the idea that she enrolled her election stuff in that.
So we're getting closer and closer to being on the board of this.
Okay, so what do you look for, what would you like to get down to? Possible.
Five million is kind of what I was trying to do, is kind of make it reasonable. But, you know, there's a lot of input that still needs to happen. It's all conceptual, but trying to make it only what we need, but still time for growth, right? And a lot of the conference rooms, and again, there's a lot of discussions that just were rightly all within. At least we have some basic premises. Other conference rooms could be used for offices too, as well. But we still have to do a lot of staff discussions as well, so, but to give you some bases.
Can we get to ask questions here?
Yeah, we could at the end. So let me, let me, let me back to the board first. So thoughts from the board members on how we proceed? Like just in a general way? What is everybody thinking? Do you have any thoughts?
I think, you know, I've been pretty open with what I think. We need to tell them all. And I think refurbishing this one or trying to change this building is going to be ending up more expensive than building a new one. So that was the biggest hurdle to figure out is if we wanted to build a new one, what would that look like? Where would it be? We were looking for vacant land during that process too, but it wasn't really coming up with anything to even see what that would even cost in today's world. And the longer we wait, we know the more expensive it's going to be. So when Dwayne's firm worked out a plan for the northern part of the sports park, I was like, really, we can do that? I like the idea to keep it in that central. I mean, we're creating that way in our township, that we have our township hall right in the middle of our township. Not many townships can say that, so I think that's kind of nice. So I like that plan and I really liked the plan with the basement. But then when we figured out how much that was going to cost, that was a real eye-opener. And so then when they changed it and kept it a single level and added more storage to the southern, southeastern end of it, I kind of like that even better looking towards the future because it is your space to grow that as it possibly to. So, but the whole arrangement of the offices really needs to be shared with the staff. We really need to get their input on it. I think we've done a lot of work on it, but I think we need to spend a little bit more time with some of them because they always come up with things that we haven't thought about.
I agree. Just for clarity, the property next to us, I think they are open to selling if we didn't need space. So it's just something else to think about, sell the property to the southwest of us if we need to, if we need.
Again, that would be additional costs.
Right, exactly, it is. But I also wanted to make sure, disclose that, I think they're open.
You brought a very point, we are a unique township. So I think we need to try to keep it central right here because we have three cities that we encompass, which is kind of odd. So, you know, it's because of the way we have to keep it here. it's, 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 keep it here as much as possible.
We are in the center of it.
Right.
Christina?
Well, I, for one, I just want to say, I think, Dwayne, the, the whole process that we've done, I just want to say, has, has been an absolutely wonderful process. I think the, um, I think all of the time that you took with us, and listening to us, and working, I mean, it's, it's been a good, a great, um, experience. And I absolutely, I love the idea of eventually, when we build a township hall, to be on the corner down there. It would be beautiful, it would be such a statement to absolutely have our, our township offices right there at the corner. I just, I, I am concerned with how, how we're rolling this through. I, I, this was in, this, in my brain, I mean, it was, it was our needs analysis, it definitely was the, the first step, and I feel like the first step just kind of gained wheels before a lot of us realized what was happening. And so I'm, I'm still concerned about that. The five million dollars for the building, um, does not include anything within the building. So we'll have a shell, and not, no, nothing to put into the building. So that five million dollars is not a complete number, um.
It does, it does, it depends on furniture.
I thought we asked that, and it did not.
No, there's additional furniture laws that identify for that, I know.
So.
Well, we can just, uh, get information that it seems like.
Well, we, we take our time, Christina, I mean, this.
I don't think anybody gets home, at least I never thought we were gonna plan on doing this in the next year or two.
That's what it feels like, honestly, to me, that's what it feels like.
I know that we need to determine what we need to use our ARPA money funds for, but I don't know, I need more information on, okay, so when we get to the point where we allocate the ARPA money, at what kind of timeline does that develop then? I mean, so we allocate the money, does that mean we have to spend it with a certain amount?
We have to spend it by the end of two thousand twenty-six.
By the end of two thousand twenty-six, okay, so.
But we have to decide by the end of next year. So we have, with ARPA, we have, we have, uh, ARPA, ARPA. We have some time there.
And addition?
And the next.
And the next year.
You have to decide. Yes, but not, but it has to be spent by the.
It has to be spent by twenty-six.
So by twenty, then the twenty twenty-four, we have to decide what we're gonna spend it on. And then it has to be extended by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, the, the question that I have is, if we go out now, and, in order to make this thing happen, we'd have to vote on it. Correct, you're right?
Uh, correct.
Then what is the total cost of the building, has there been any analysis done on that? The total cost of the building, let's say, we build a five million dollars, six million dollars, what's the total cost of it?
Around five million dollars.
Total cost, after the?
Includes fees, it includes furniture, some of the technology that.
Includes the technologies?
Yeah, we reduce, yeah.
How about the cost of the, uh, we had interest on the bond, but we had pioneers look at it, so it was, it was the. That does not include the cost of the funding.
Or interest.
So the interest would be, yeah.
Interest, yeah. So what is the interest on that based on the benchmark?
Three, three and a half percent. Again, this is where.
They're asking questions.
Well, I know, and so this is, this is the catch 22, you know, the, everything I do, you say, I got ahead of myself, but I, but I have to get any answers. So I need guidance, and I've met with bankers, because I just get rough numbers, so. So I think the base loss was three and a half percent, but it's changing, so.
More like six.
And you, you said, Dwayne, that this includes the technology in the building?
There's a technology, um, yeah, in terms, that covers some of this technology, so, and then furniture.
Networking, computers?
Yeah, some of that, some of that.
Some of it.
So, yeah, we put, we put base plan houses in this country, it wasn't just the shell, it's.
But if we go too far down there, well, we're, we are, we're staying a little bit fast. We are, we're a little bit.
I'm not trying, I'm not throwing storms, I'm asking questions, Liz.
Yes.
And, uh, I know maybe it sounds that way, but I'm not, I'm asking questions. The other thing that is unique, I mean, I see, um. Was it, uh, Gaines Township, for instance? I've been in their building, I mean, it's, to me, it's massive for the needs of the township. And they are, the cost of operating that building has to be astronomical. When I look at all the glass, and I look at the cubic feet of air that we have to heat and cool, to me, it doesn't make sense.
That's what most of us thought, that when I went to work, it's. We didn't like the side, we didn't like the exterior, but a lot of the interior, some of it worked, but like Dwayne said, some of it felt like you were a little bit too divided. I still kind of like the main hallway idea myself personally, but.
But anyway, that's, just so, but if you think about the timeframe in which that building was built, it was probably what everybody liked, but.
We're all gonna have differing opinions, so that's the hard part about.
Sure, sure. The other thing that I, that struck me about the Gaines Township building, is that it was completely made before, before they started. And that's something that we could possibly be looking at, if we are cautious, and I'm assuming that we will be, that, that going forward to make this. And how do we make this happen here? Can we make this happen?
And, and what's the timeframe on that? And how long would it take?
Well, it all depends on how we look at the ARPA three using our, our money as our driving force that we need.
Maybe.
Now, I, I'm just throwing out possibilities, okay? That we look at purchasing the piece of property behind the township hall with ARPA money, as using our, our money for that, and if we do the infrastructure work necessary to make this plan work, use other parts of the ARPA money, which would reduce the total cost of the building itself, if possible. I'm not sure, can we work that into this timeframe, that if we look at the structure possibly being built at some point, starting in twenty-six or whatever? All of this stuff takes time, and this seven times thing, I have a firm believer in that type of approach, to get the total buying on projects when you're doing them this magnitude. If we just go ahead and plow ahead with this, I'm afraid, when we go to ask for money for a bond to focus thing, it's gonna be nope across the board.
So I'm, I'm trying to get as, as close to possible to not have to, or go for very, very little. Like, the, the goal is, because I, I know how conservative we all are physically, and I, in fact, I was gonna try to come up with a plan to save for this. And I had a, a person we all respect, a leader in this community, none of us, sat me down, and from a business perspective, said, you understand, and I know you, you're trying to save, you, you don't have any loans, we have no debt in this township. And he said, you can't save fast enough for the way real estate works. You can't save fast enough, it's gonna cost you more the longer it takes you to save. And I, it really clicked with me, so I, I understand that, and we can, we can do whatever the board wants, I'm just trying to.
It doesn't mean that we couldn't put something in place and maybe save some of it, I'm in agreement with that. But the timeline that you're talking about, by the time you have enough saved, the building's gonna cost more than what it is today. It's half as much more, two years' time, it's more, it all depends obviously on the economy, but.
You know, you say half, but there is a.
And the problem there, Gordon, is this office is growing out of its shop. That's one of the main problems that I see. If you want to hire an office manager, where are you gonna put them? If you want to hire a facilities director, where are you gonna put them? You need more staff, where are you gonna put them? We're gonna be growing in our population, we might need to add another voting precinct. That means a lot more equipment, where the heck am I gonna put it? All of that stuff has to be addressed. Maybe we should have been planning for this years ago, but, again, we are here now, yeah, here now.
I was the one that pushed Mr. Ewing's plan.
I know you did.
And so, you know, it took me two or three years to get us to even think about doing this one.
Why are you saying we're still rolling this?
I'm not saying we're still rolling it, but I, I am saying that we still, you don't just plow ahead with it, and, and so.
I, I do think that.
You're, you're, you're misstruing what I'm saying.
Okay. I use a different term for it, please, I can't.
I don't know if I can read you. See, we can argue, but still laugh with each other, I hope. I, the, I have always done things in a five-year plan. If I can't see to pay something off in five years, I don't do it.
That's true, but have you ever paid for a township hall before?
Yeah.
No, but I'm not talking about one person either, I'm talking about a whole township, working together. Okay? And that's part of the sales plan of the seven times that, when we need to look at this thing. And I hope that we have some visionaries up here, you know? I've been accused of being a dreamer all my life, and I am at a place in my life that I never thought I would be, because I dreamt, but I worked hard to make it happen, okay? And I think we can do that here, because I think we have people who want to get the job done, and we have to dream a little harder, and we have to work a little harder to make it happen.
So, Liz, you're gonna leave it to all of you.
Oh, I just, I, I see what you're saying, you're asking me to put on the board. Okay, listen, we just, Gordon, I understand, everyone's saying we should have put a one, should have put a one years ago. Okay, but you know what? We're here now. I think we've put so much time and energy in that for me, because I think we're going in the correct place, being transparent. It's humanly possible with everybody, I think it is time to take the next baby step, whatever that is. So that's what the supervisor is asking his board, he's not some dictator up there, you know, saying this is what's gonna happen, he's asking us to, what should be the next step? So what's the next step, in your opinion?
How much is it gonna cost?
I think that's why I take some board, it's not just about one person. I'm just, I can throw things out to the board. So you're asking me right now, what, what my.
What do you think is the next step?
Well, I, I don't.
What do you think the next step is? I think the next step is that, can we get community input on which one they like, and which, which, um, which plan they like?
Can we get prices?
I, I personally wouldn't like.
Whatever's laying in it's.
What, I mean, as you sit here to talk about the next step should be.
One, one, one second, let me, let me open it up, I will, I will, David, I will, I will. Okay, I just want to let the board be able to talk for me.
One thing that hasn't been, might fit with what Gordon is saying, is a phasing of it. Some sort of phasing of this building project, a lesson. I don't know how.
Maybe, can I, can I, Dwayne, what are other, I mean, like, you're the experts, what?
Because before, before, hold on, because my idea, my thought process there is, we have some other money, and we have, some other money outside that we could use to do maybe, to do maybe? I don't know if that's going in some sort of, or not, I, I can't be able to tell you. Um, but it might give us a little bit of time to still report what we're going to do to ARPA money for, to actually allocate that one part of that money, and then.